Yeah, it's recording. Sean McMaster saying they have a little trouble getting in. So I'm just gonna call him and tell him Rob had a little difficulty so to come back in, go out and come back in. Okay, Chris.
Okay, good evening. It is May 18th at 7:01. This is the Appropriations Committee. I am the Chair, Councillor Sinella. In pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order posing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Appropriations Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Melrose website and on MMTV.org. Adam Clark, could you please call the role?
Councillor Migliorelli.
Here.
Councillor Tremontosi.
Here.
Councillor McMaster. Councillor McNutt.
Here.
Councillor Echols. Can I hear her here?
Yes.
Councillor Garapay. Mark, you're muted. Councillor Garapay?
Yes.
Here.
Councillor Stewart?
Here.
Councillor Thomas? Councillor Jamaladeen? Councillor, President Gregoritis?
Here.
And Chair Sinella?
Here.
Okay, so we have 10 present. Councillor Thomas, can you hear us? Councillor Thomas, here. Okay, so I'm just gonna see, so we have 10 present. I'm gonna see if Sean McMaster's having some, he's just texting me, he's not working for him, so he's having some technical difficulties.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for public comment. Motion for public comment made by Vice Chair Migliorelli, seconded by Councillor Echols. Adam Clark?
Councillor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Councillor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Councillor McMaster. Councillor McNutt.
Yes.
Councillor Echols.
Yes.
Councillor Garapay.
Yes.
Councillor Stewart.
Yes.
Councillor Thomas. You can't hear us. Councillor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
Councillor Gregoritis, President Gregoritis, excuse me.
Yes.
Okay, so Councillor Thomas is in the room and cannot hear us, but I...
I take a five-minute recess to get that technology.
Well, I think what I'm gonna say, because there's, you know, nine of us are able to get in without an issue, so I'm gonna offline text Councillor Thomas to log off and come back in. There's an attendee, if anyone wish, you wanna speak at public comment, could you raise your virtual hand?
Those on an iPhone, if you could swipe, it's on the next screen.
I have someone that wishes to speak, so I'm gonna bring this person in. It's Mr. Jerry Maroz, and then I'll work with Councillor Thomas while we're doing that.
Did you bring him in?
He's coming in now.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is, hi, thank you. Thank you for having, letting me speak tonight. My name is Jerry Maroz. I know tonight, your public hearing is on specific sections of the budget. But what I'd like to talk about a little bit tonight is the structure of the budget document itself. In the budgeting that I do in my professional work, the most important line that we wanna look at is what a good projected expense for the end of the current year is to know as a basis for what we need the next year. And I was hoping that this year with a different administration, we'd see a different presentation of the budget. But, you know, it shows what we spent in 2019, which is a wonderful thing to show. The information about what our original budget in 2020 and revised budget in 2020 is, is helpful information. The year-to-date 2020 tells us where we are as of the date of this document, which obviously it gets older as you get through this whole process, and it's not always updated. But the critical element to figure out what you wanna, what we need to budget for 2021 would be what exactly are we intending to project to spend for the June 30th, 2020 fiscal year? And, um, and that's the thing that is always missing from these documents, that I would like to believe that every one of the department heads would have a good sense already of what monies are already encumbered, what monies they typically pay out in the last month and a half of the fiscal year, as they've done in prior years, and that they could give us a good, fairly accurate amount for a projected line item. I haven't had a chance to completely study this document yet, but in other years, we found a lot of anomalies where, you know, that one column shows, now, you know, I won't even go there, but anyway, I will be coming back to speak about other specific items besides the ones you have tonight on the budget. I would hope that in this process, we somehow could get the administration to put out a document that would show us what people project will be with all the things we even know now, given the extra expenses of the, this crisis time, where we will be in June 30th and why. And if we're off of the budget, it would be nice to know why we're off of the budget. If this budget in 2020 had some anomalies, it'd be nice to know whether those anomalies exist, will exist, or people think they may exist for 2021, or whether 2020 was really an anomaly, why we were off some way. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in queue? You're on mute, which is a $10 fine.
Yeah, so I do not believe, so I'm looking in the queue right now, and no one's raising their hand, so I believe that it's the only person that wishes to speak at this time.
How about a sound? Councillor Thomas?
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Just checking. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
A motion to close public comment by Councillor Stewart, seconded by Vice Chair Migliorelli. Adam Clark?
Councillor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Councillor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Councillor McMaster.
Yes.
Councillor McNutt.
Yes.
Councillor Echols.
Yes.
Councillor Garapay.
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Stewart.
Yes.
Councillor Thomas.
Yes.
Councillor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Councillor, President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chairman Sinella.
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you. First, the order of the receiving 2020-89, which is the the Melrose operating budget for fiscal year 2021, the amount of $88,397,961 and 8 cents. I hear from a couple parts of this, whatever, the first stop of the budget is 121, the mayor's office. I believe we have Chief of Staff, do?
I just brought him in, Patrick.
A motion to suspend the rules, so we can hear from the appropriate administration personnel.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councillor Tremontosi, seconded by President Gregoritis. Should call the role?
Councillor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Councillor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Councillor McMaster.
Yes.
Councillor McNutt.
Yes.
Councillor Echols.
Yes.
Councillor Garapay.
Yes.
Councillor Stewart.
Yes.
Councillor Thomas.
Yes.
Councillor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chairman Sinella.
Yes.
11 yes.
So our rules are now suspended, and if you'd like to, uh, a few words about your budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the council for hearing me with your suspension of your rules. My name, for those of you watching at home, my name is Patrick Pendergast. I serve as Mayor Brodus, Chief of Staff. I joined the administration most of the way through November following the election, and previously for the five years prior, has served as a legislative aide and then staff director for, who was then State Representative Brodus. Throughout that period, serving Melrose has been a major privilege and a pleasure to see what a tight-knit community is capable of in both good times and challenging times. The job before us was certainly nothing that we imagined even when we first took office, and COVID-19 even turned that on its head. The budget that the mayor has presented to you leaves many options on the table for us as we work our way through what the financial impacts, both on the residents and on the city financial be as a result of the crisis. Our office, and I'm here to speak to you tonight on a couple of matters, three, I believe, mayor's office, the disability commission, and the community events line item. Our office is arguably fairly simple, and I'm happy to review from the outset the highlights. Mayor's salary is set by the city charter, as you're all aware. That leaves room for two staffers currently are, we have a mayoral assistant who is pivotal in both communications as well as clerical work for the office and my role as Chief of Staff. In prior administrations, my role had been titled Director of Community Services or Operations and Operations. We felt that Chief of Staff was a little more appropriate for the work we were trying to get done, but many of the same duties and probably a couple others are still on my plate. So you'll see an overall reduction in the salary board. Moving on to printing, we anticipate printing to be, as we did last year. Printing covers everything from business cards to stationery, which does add up for new registration. We also do posters throughout the year. Letterhead, we've done, past prior administrations, we've done kindergarten buttons for the incoming kindergarten class. Some of these traditions are things we intend to continue with, are the ones we are reviewing. There is an expense account for the mayor. The mayor is not eligible to receive reimbursement for mileage, et cetera, and other out-of-pocket expenses that he occurs in his duties, which are 24/7. This account reflects that and has remained stable through the year. We also employ, we do not have a full-time receptionist. We are able to employ receptionists part-time and also utilize our valued senior volunteers, as well as seniors who are working as part of the tax work-off program. For those hours that we can't find somebody, we do have a receptionist who helps manage the inflow of calls and traffic into the office. We pay dues, memberships to two major organizations, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, as well as the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I think many of you are familiar with the work both of these organizations do. Much of the support they offer the city probably goes unheralded, but they're especially effective in connecting us to grant opportunities, technical assistance, and really getting the city to think in a more regional or statewide approach. We don't have to always reinvent the wheel, so our membership in those organizations is very valuable, even so far in this administration. Occasionally, it's education or travel or seminars is required. Registration for those conferences is covered under the next line item. And that, so that allows us to attend the seminars and events in these organizations and others post. Lastly, and probably most significantly, you see is the community outreach line. This covers many things. Obviously, you're well aware of the fact that COVID-19 has significantly curtailed or impacted our ability to support these events in the past. These events have included healthy Melrose, Memorial Day Parade, Senior Sign-Up Day, where we offer an opportunity for seniors in Melrose to access all the different leaf programs that the city's made available to them. Our administrations have used this money for kids' parties for kids who've accomplished various achievements. Events that are celebrating our residents, our city parks, kindergarten welcome party, we contribute to various chamber events. And this also operates the Kids Club, always popular with Kids Club, that helps break down isolation between new families and gives kids a chance to see each other. This money's also gone into supporting intergenerational prom, which we unfortunately have to cancel this year because of COVID, and various musical and arts events. So all that being said, that is the kind of intent behind that account. It is vital to, you know, create the events and memories and sorts of outreach that make Melrose the special place that it is, that really get people into our city parks and into some of the areas of the city they may not normally look at. How we proceed, I think you, like I, can imagine a many, many different applications of how we will need to facilitate that same outreach during and after where we are now and are normal getting out of this. And so while some of those things are not stapled down right now, in terms of dates and events, because I don't know anybody who can predict those things, the need will be there. And so we are looking, we're excitedly looking for opportunities to facilitate community, to help grow those connections in a safe and purposeful way. So I believe, if I'm mistaken, that should cover this particular item for you.
On this item, we'll open it up for questions. First in the queue is Councillor Tremontosi.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Pendergast, for being with us as we begin the budget hearings. Just a couple comments for us, please. As we review each city department budget going forward, we must be mindful of the city's finances and our ability to sustain spending, especially during this unprecedented time involving the COVID-19 pandemic. Is that the? Some feedback, is that coming from anybody?
John, I think you're the only person speaking, so I think it's coming on your end.
All right, I'll try to adjust my volume. The bottom line is that the fiscal issues of the city will be challenging. That's not my words, that's the mayor's words. Here's what we do know, the mayor has presented us with a budget that he says doesn't rely on any federal dollars. That's good, because we know we are not likely to get any federal money. We also anticipate that we, that there will be a 12.5% decrease in the amount of unrestricted local aid from the state. That's unfortunate. It could be more, I suspect, and it will be. I recently attended a Massachusetts Municipal Association webinar where the state's fiscal year 2021 budget looks grim. I quote grim, that's the words they use. $4.4 to $6 billion reduction in revenues, and the state will need to tap into its rainy day fund to bail itself out, and they certainly will do that. The question is, what is it gonna, what's gonna be necessary to bail out the municipalities and cities and towns? The bottom line is that we are all in this together. And I'll be asking each department head to provide us with options, especially in the area of possible reductions to some of their budget items. As you all know, I had put in a request to the, to the administration for some information. They did provide some, I appreciate that, and I thank you. I thank the mayor for providing us with some of the additional information I requested, although I know it was difficult and not yet possible to put together that spreadsheet that I requested. But we will proceed, in any event, and try to move forward with what we have. With that in mind, oh, also, I do appreciate the opportunity to ask some questions, and certainly every other councillor will have the opportunity as well. As a point of order, I would just suggest we hold off on making any motions to recommend before everybody has an opportunity to make any motions to amend any of the budgets if they choose to do so. Mr. Pendergast, I just have a couple questions for you. One in particular on your line item, there's one that says on the salary item. What is, can you explain what sick leave incentive is?
So my understanding, and I would like to confer with Mary Ann Long, our Director of Human Resources, before giving you the final answer, councillor. But my understanding is that it is a, it is an incentive for us to not use all of our sick leaves in a particular fiscal year. Municipal employees can build up a tremendous amount of sick leaves each, each year and carry it over year to year, based on the policies of the municipality or the state. My understanding of this incentive is a payout on an annual basis, so that the liability facing the city, if an employee were to leave, city municipal employment would not be as great. That's my understanding, and I can certainly confirm that.
Right, so it sounds to me like it's an incentive program, not that the city might offer some of its employees or all their employees, that if they don't use this personal time off, a sick leave, they can buy it back in effect, or they get compensated for that. As you know, as you may know, in the private sector, we don't have, necessarily have all that. Some businesses, you know, if you don't use your sick leave time, you lose it by the end of the year. So that's a little bit of a, an item that I think we might have some room to negotiate on. And I'm considering trying to see if we can reduce that, if not eliminate it. I trust that the city employees, they do, they, they're hard-working people, in that if they are sick for any reason, that their work can be covered for. But again, we need to be mindful of the city's spending as we're going forward. Is there?
Councillor, is that the, this, the total appropriated amount for that right now is $1,250, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I assume also that there has not been no layoffs or furloughs as a result of the COVID-19 in the mayor's department?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
You're still employed, the mayor is, as well as assistants, great, thank you.
Cut out halfway through, then you'll know.
All right, one other thing too, community outreach. The mayor's office does provide great programs for the city, and I, we all appreciate that, but in light of the fact that some of these programs have been reduced or eliminated because of the COVID-19 situation we're experiencing, is there any room that give us, help us? Because I could see where we can eliminate or reduce that community outreach item. Any suggestions?
I guess what it suggests is that probably right now, for the amount of money in that line item, and I was remiss in neglecting to mention that long before COVID-19, when the mayor first took office, he was very interested in piloting a participatory budgeting program. And we had tossed around figures for that. Ultimately, we landed at $5,000, and that's why you'll see that increase in the community outreach line. The hope was to give students of high school age in Melrose the opportunity to allocate that money directly and to launch a program in tandem with a lot of the work that the mayor did as State Representative to pass statewide mandated civics education, to give students the opportunity to manage a piece of the city budget, so that they'd have a stake in the outcomes of your deliberations and the work that we do on behalf of the administration. That work can certainly go on remotely. And I guess to answer, and so thank you for letting me get back to that piece to explain that, that particular increase. But to answer your question generally, let's submit that for the relatively low amount of money that is in this line item and the huge need for community right now, given the fact that we can't see each other in the way that we used to. The need is there more now than ever to facilitate the same sort of results of the programs that previous administrations were able to invest in. I also anticipate that when we, I'm sure you saw today that the governor has entered us into a phased approach for reopening. As we enter later phases, there will be significant need to facilitate use of some of our street space for downtown businesses and in some of our other business districts. We're gonna have to have more events to get to jumpstart, you know, our local economy and make sure that we, some of these merchants are able to recoup their losses. There'll also be a need for more community events. People haven't seen each other, and these events will be complicated, because they're gonna require social distancing, they're gonna, they may require having temperature taken, et cetera. And for me, that looks like, yes, communications, getting the word out, but also budgeting for these events, equipment, infrastructure, barriers, table rentals. Overtime, various city departments were required. And so the budget we're submitting is fairly narrow because of the anticipated need for facilitating community moving forward.
None of that has been put into place yet, obviously, right?
As of now, we're just monitoring the situation as it unfolds, but as we get to more stable plateaus of what life is gonna be like, it is our intention, we've already, was already in a couple meetings with some of the people in this meeting today about how we would facilitate those things. So while it's a work in progress, we're not there yet.
It is a 37% increase in the prior budget. Do you think you really need that full amount to accomplish what you want to do?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll defer further questioning to others, thank you.
So we have a couple other people in the queue. I just wanna go run through the list real quick, and then if I missed you, raise your hand. Next up, we have Councillor Garapay and Thomas, President Gregoritis, Councillor McMaster. Did I miss anybody? Really, okay. All right, so Councillor Garapay?
Thank you, Chairman. To Mr. Pendergast for being here, thanks for the explanation going over it line by line. You answered a lot of my questions, and Councillor Tremontosi also asked a question regarding the community outreach. I was also a little perplexed on the 37% increase. And what was gonna question whether we should, whether we can just still get by with what was budgeted at 13, 13.5, understanding that we did we did not, we did cancel a number of events this year, and we're at 7,000. I appreciate your detailed explanation on that. I do have a quick question. I do notice that the salary, salary has gone down 4.4% as a result of the last year, as a result of, you know, I think we had, that position was empty for a little bit last year, plus some new staff coming in. What is the percent budgeted for raises? Don't need to know dollar amounts, people, but what is the percent budgeted for raises in the mayor's office?
My understanding is zero.
Thank you. I'm all set, thank you.
Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pendergast, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Prentigas, welcome, thank you for being here. Again, Councilors Garapay and Tremontosi both touched on things that I wanted to talk about as well. I did have a question about the sick leave incentive, have, has the mayor's staff been accruing time? During the COVID work shutdown, have they been telecommuting and have they been accruing their sick time?
As far as I know. Neither the mayor's assistant nor I have taken a sick day. In 2020. And then we have been working beyond, we were working beyond full time before COVID and I would say that has only increased.
So other city staff throughout, you know, the city government, they're also eligible for the sick leave incentive?
I can't answer that right now because I don't know the answer. I can get back to you though.
If people have.
My guess is and my understanding is yes, the problem that we're trying to mitigate is. You don't want an employee accruing over years and years and years all this sick leave and then it's time for them to retire or leave. And the city has to pay out all this money. At the end, that you have no idea when that employee is going to leave and so we put into place these incentive programs so that. I'd rather get my money each year. I'm not going to use my sick leave. So that the city's liability at the end, you know, to talk about some of those unexpected costs that may happen at the end of a fiscal year. This, the programs like this mitigate that and I believe that they're in every department and available to every. Every worker, which, which is to say, it is not a thing that is unique to the mayor's office, how that actually shakes out department to department, I can't speak specifically to right now. But that $1,200 is there so that would incentivize us to get rid of some of our sick days.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any idea of how many employees take advantage of that incentive during FY20?
In the mayor's office?
In the mayor's office or across city service?
No, but I can get that to you.
Okay, that'll be great, thank you so much.
President Gregoritis?
Thank you, Chairman Sunalan, thank you, Mr. Prentigas, for being here, I just have two quick follow up questions on what we've talked about so far. I believe the first one will probably be for Mary Ann Long, but is the sick leave incentive, is that new this year or is that something? That's been around and been incorporated in previous budgets and I'm assuming is possibly part of collective bargaining agreements with very various city unions.
I believe it's not, it's certainly not unique to this fiscal year and it's not unique to Melrose and I do believe that it emanates from some of the benefits that. Collective bargaining has won for. Workers in in the city. And there are restrictions on differential treatment between union and non-union workers. The mayor's assistant and I are not yet in a union.
Thank you, and then one more question on the additional $5,000 in community outreach that you talked about. I just want to make sure my understanding is this would be a participatory budgeting pilot project where we would take. Students, I'm assuming Melrose High School students and have them actually engage in. The process of taking a small amount of money and determining how to use it in the community, is that, I just want to make sure I understood your description.
That's almost exactly right, it would be open to all. All residents who are high school age in Melrose. So we want to make sure that we capture students who have dropped out as well as students who attend other schools. And of course, students who attend Melrose High School, but the idea is you might know. Several other municipalities nationwide and probably most notably locally, the city of Cambridge has a citywide citizen. Participatory budgeting program. This is a very small. Pilot amount that, you know, we'd be able to teach the process of building coalitions, advocacy, moving through the budget process, etc. It would be a great opportunity for each of you to connect with students. And teach them about your role. As well as for them to feel like, especially when national politics are the way that they are, that they've got some purchase and say. In how how their city is run and how politics unfold close to home.
Thank you for that, I have no further questions.
Counselor McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Prentigas, it's customary when any department comes before us. To provide a memo that's essentially a questionnaire, the template that provides information so that we're not hearing about. The details of a budget for the first time on the night of a budget hearing. And it helps, as I said, to put in contact contacts particular line items, in this case, I think it would have been particularly helpful. For the 37% increase despite what you've already testified this evening. Can you inform this council if there is any reason why we were not provided with a questionnaire? On this budget, but also for the two other budgets that we will be having come before us this evening?
The administration has been working on responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. The communications and process that we wanted to go through with the budget when the mayor first took office. No longer became possible, given the amount of time and resources we needed to expend to keep the city safe and functioning during this period. That having been said, we're doing our best to complete those customary questionnaires to get to you. To explain in detail some of the nuances of the other departments. Items you have before you were. Except for the areas that I've enumerated or described are almost unchanged. From the last fiscal year. So while regrettable, it's the situation that we're in.
Thank you, so if I understand it correctly, Mr. Prentigas, the intention going forward now that we are. Going into the step down phase of this stay at home order would be to provide the council with advance notice. In the form of a questionnaire or some type of a accompanying memo to help us put in context the budgets that will be coming before us moving forward. I understand that correctly?
I'd have to confirm with the mayor what kind of documentation he thought was best to supply to the council, but certainly some level of documentation ahead of these meetings, I think would be advantageous to each of you and to the folks at home.
I would appreciate that and I think many of my colleagues would and my public would, so thank you and if you could perhaps let Miss Foot know what the intention is moving forward. With respect to additional information, I would be thankful for that. Mr. Prentigas, Counselor Tremontosi and Counselor Garapay asked you a bit about the community outreach line item. Which as we've discussed is a 37% increase. Counselor Garapay also talked about the 4.4% decrease in salary and wages. In the mayor's, mayor, the mayor's budget for the mayor, for your office. Is there any possibility at all that community outreach money may go to compensate? You or any other employee of the mayor's office for performing any community outreach tasks that would be held in FY21?
My understanding is that would be illegal. And in order to use funds in one particular item or another, we would have to appear before you again. Your authorization.
So the intention is is it for, to be used for the types of resources that you had. Mentioned after Counselor Tremontosi asked you questions, not for stipends to work or staff events for the mayor.
Just put it affirmatively. My salary and the mayor's assistant's salary and the mayor's salary. Will only come from the salary line. We will not receive monies from any other line.
Thank you, my final question is with respect to the. Community outreach. How do we arrive at the actual number, the 5,000 increase, I realize. And I think you you do make somewhat of a good case for these these needs that may be coming before the city. As it relates to different types of events that may be held. Either related to COVID-19 or unrelated to COVID-19 where there may need to be some type of community health measures put in place. The the concern, and that seems well founded, the concern I have is not knowing. What what that might look like, it we, the number seems arbitrary to me, it just seems to be. A number without some attempt to budget what some of those costs might look like and I understand. We're not going to know exactly what those costs are, but. All it is, is it's an increase at 37% without something that explains what those potentially could be. And how we arrive at that cost and I just, I have some trouble voting to increase anything in light of where we are in this economy. And the impact that it's having on the city in the state. Without a better sense of how we're coming up with any type of increase. So the question is, how do we arrive at that 37% increase? From a budgeting perspective? Is that number arbitrary or is it based on something that we don't have before us this evening?
Well, I think it's a third option, I think that the 5,000 additional dollars that we are requesting you appropriate. Is for the mayor's pilot program for participatory budgeting for students of high school age that reside in the city of Melrose. I think a large percentage of the increase will be based on that. The rest of the budget is based on last fiscal year's outreach. And again. If. If we need to shut down, let's say we are allowed to open up restaurants, but restaurants have to be open at a reduced capacity. And we determine that we are able to shut down parts of Main Street to the vehicular traffic. So that we can facilitate those restaurants having that space. How much are tables going to cost and who's the appropriate authority person or entity to rent them, how much will overtime cost? Do we need jersey barriers or can we get away with a different type of barrier to close down the street? If we're going to do this multiple weekends in a row, will it be dependent on weather? These are all, and then. Do we need to pay for graphics to be made, do we need to pay for invitations, do we need to pay for signage, do we need to pay for? You know, investments in website, things like that, to get people to become more aware of these programs, etc. The city is facing an unprecedented challenge with COVID-19. I. I would hazard to say that any sort of estimation about getting quotes for budgeting for this outreach line would be. Be extremely challenging because I'm not, I'm not certain that we'd be able to stick to it because we don't know what the situation is going to be. In a couple of weeks, let alone a couple of months. What we do know is that the community is going to have to bounce back and this particular line item is key. In getting the community back together and businesses back up and running, etc. So I share your concern, I wish that I could provide more detail about how we would. Expend each dollar, but we're not in that position.
Thank you, Mr. Prentigas, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Vice Chair Maggie LaRalle.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Mr. Prentigas, for being here tonight, just to. Kind of continue on with this community outreach questioning. I don't know if this is a question or just a statement, but if year to date, we've spent $7,000 in this line item and it's due to the fact that we've had to cancel a number of events. It's safe to say that we're probably not going to be in large groups for the first part of FY21. So just making an assumption based on the fact of last year's plus 5,000 in this new program, I like, I sort of question that that logic. But I do hear you that we might need additional funds for these community gatherings moving forward, I just don't know. You know, how would we know that that would come from the community outreach line, I I just have some questions because I don't have the context from last year about what was, what was spent. And what will be spent moving forward, so that's more of a statement than a question. For the education seminars, those sound like they're for professional development conferences, are you sure that those are going to be, you know, continuing on in FY21?
I'm not sure that they're going to be continuing on, certainly not in the traditional sense of a conference that everybody goes to a convention center to take. But. I know that the mayor is eager to avail himself of every opportunity to learn more about how to bring better ideas back to Melrose and I think that continues on. I'm not sure how. Many of the organizations that offer these will structure their fees moving forward.
Okay, my thought was probably that they might be lower if they're less in person costs, which then goes up to my question about the dues and memberships. Increase of 15%, is that because more people are taking memberships like you and the mayor or is it increased membership fees, what is, what's the 15%?
The fees have been increasing year over year for a long time now and it's only now that we're budgeting them appropriately. But MAPC and NMA have both raised their fees.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Echols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Prentigas, for being here tonight, just a little bit of question, I I understand you might not have the full details of the participatory budgeting. Project fleshed out, but my impression of the Cambridge program, which is obviously much larger than than $5,000, I believe it's a million dollars. Is that they have two paid staff members who devote some of their time to this project and a paid intern. Are you expecting to run this out and will just yourself and maybe the mayor's assistant, the mayor be overseeing it? Do you plan on involving other staff members, just kind of where the bandwidth is going to come for running this project?
I think the. This particular project will be a collaboration between the. Schools, probably our state representative or state senator, several others, our Congressman Clark. I am anticipating, I'm counting on the the majority of the work being executed through the mayor's office. Me, the mayor and the mayor's assistant. And am hopeful for eager community partners to step up and. Help this project get off the ground. You're all invited.
Thank you, that's all for me, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Jamal Adine.
Good evening, thank you for being with us, Patrick, my question is during these community events. Would the city be using any outsourced funds? To to make these events happen such as, you know, businesses contributions or is it just? These events would be just to support the businesses and we're not going to ask anything back from them?
I think it's too early to say, I think it depends on the event, in the past, I have to imagine that most of these events were some combination of. We're leveraging volunteer work, donations from businesses, purchases from other businesses. And staff time on the city side, I have to imagine that moving forward will operate in a similar manner. Again, to be precise, the point of this money is not. The point of this money is community outreach, so that can be everything from socially distanced. Playing on our playsets and playgrounds and some sort of a celebration for kids. To perhaps something involving the downtown moving forward, we don't fully know right now. We know that we're going to, there's many ideas in the community and that we're going to have to. Invest in a big way in getting Melrose to come back together when it is safe to do so. The, what those events look like and particularly how the funding for each is split up. I don't know, but I do know that we will leverage these dollars to the extent possible to make as much impact, positive impact as we can.
Thank you, and would, is anyone, is there any committee right now working on organizing or preparing for these, planning for these events or is it just? Waiting to to form this committee?
Mayor's Economic Development Task Force has broken out into a couple of different working groups that are looking at. Given much anticipated Baker directives we've received today. How the city, local chamber of Congress, other organizations and businesses can partner to. Provide downtown merchants and merchants in our other business districts. Meanwhile, many of these other events, for instance, Healthy Melrose or the intergenerational. Spring fling prom. These all have dedicated volunteer groups that have worked year after year after year to build these events and grow them. Once it is safe together, again, I hope and I anticipate that the many of these groups will want to come back together to say. We never got to have our event, we want to have our event and. I have to imagine that'll be a stressful but exciting time for the city. And so. No, there is, to answer your question, it's it's just there's no centralized. Post-COVID Fund Committee planning these things, but there are cells of people working throughout the city as they always have. On trying to figure out how to innovate their planning and. on, um, trying to figure out how to innovate their planning and, and ideas around their traditional events and pitch some new ones. Um, but we're certainly always open to new ideas.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Prendergast, for being here tonight. Uh, through the chair, I just want to make a couple of comments based on what I've heard so far this evening. Uh, on the zero percent raise, I think that's commendable. Thank you for, um, uh, recognizing the, the situation that we're all in. Uh, I appreciate that. From the community services standpoint, um, I appreciate your, um, your explanation. I believe that the, the benefits outweigh the risk on this light item uh, because essentially the businesses are going to need this. Uh, I think it's real important that, uh, when we have a, an opportunity to jumpstart uh, the local community, which is paramount to our downtown, that we do this effectively. And I think, uh, eighteen-five is a very, uh, reasonable number to be able to help out in that regard. So I, I honestly don't see, uh, any issue in this. I think it's going to be, this is, this is a line item, I think, from the standpoint of addressing the health of our community. Uh, again, you know, even though we are in a budgetary crunch, I think this is going to be really important for, for our community. From the participatory budgeting, uh, I think it's a great idea. Reason being is our children have been impacted tremendously, uh, throughout the course of the year. Um, I, I think they're going to come forward with a lot of great ideas. Uh, and I, I think that this, uh, is a great way to re-engage and involve them, uh, from, uh, uh, that all of the stress and strain that they've seen thus far this year. Uh, so I plan on supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else wishing to speak for the first time or a second time? Counselor Tramatosi. You're on mute.
Yeah, thank you. Just to, uh, to return to visit the sick leave incentive, uh, line item. Um, it does appear on other budgets, on other department budgets, and I think we're going to need an explanation for that. That I don't think Mr. Prendergast can provide to us, and that has to be given to us by, um, I think Mary Ann Long would be the appropriate department person for an explanation. So i- i- and more importantly, whether or not this is something that the city offers, um, is it something that is contractually required? Uh, is it something that, um, that can be eliminated from departments? Uh, I don't know the answer to that, and I think we need to, to at least, uh, get that answer. Um, and, um, and I would ask, uh, to the chairman that maybe we can, uh, visit, revisit that item again as we visit the other department items because we're going to see it again. So we should, we should be able to get, uh, an explanation, uh, that's going to help us in our, uh, uh, deliberations on this. Uh, that's, thank you.
So what is the, the will of the committee, uh, of the Budget one twenty-one? Madam Clerk?
I, I see it, I see Counselor McMaster has his hand up.
Counselor McMaster. You're on mute? You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I, I agree with Counselor Tramatosi, and I would just caution the council similar to, uh, how I did. Out of, out of respect to, to everyone, um, most importantly, out of respect, uh, to the process and to our constituents. Uh, and this is the same point I tried to make when the superintendent came before us on the special education, item, uh, as it related to the stabilization fund, is voting matters without all of the information before us. Um, this may be a, a budget that, as it relates to community outreach, that needs to be more than a thirty-seven percent increase. Is five thousand dollars based on Mr. Prendergast represented tonight even going to be enough? So, so the first problem is that we don't know. And what Mr. Prendergast said was he's not in a position to have the full details. But what I would suggest is, other than what Mr. Prendergast, um, testified to tonight is we don't really have any details. It's speculation. At first, uh, there was discussion around the resources that, that are needed in light of COVID. It was temperature, you know, checks and jersey barriers and table rentals. And then we heard from Mr. Prendergast that the five thousand dollars is for our participatory budgeting. So if it's for participatory budgeting, what then is left for community events that relate to COVID? Relate to community health? So I would suggest that, that the, the item for community outreach may in fact need to be more than five thousand dollars, but because there hasn't been an effort to provide some sort of line item budget, a budget within that line item, we, we don't know. Secondly, is there's, you know, some speculation that the sick leave incentive, um, is a buyback. We don't know that at all. Uh, it, it, it's called a sick leave incentive, at least in the line item. If it was a buyback, I think it would say buyback. To me, it sounds like an incentive that if you don't, if you don't call in sick for six months or a year, that you receive a stipend, and I think we should know that. And I would also argue that that may be, uh, very, uh, appropriate for collective bargaining purposes. But as you heard Mr. Prendergast say, neither he or the other employee in the mayor's office are members of a union. So the, the point being is I don't feel like we have enough information on those two items in order to go forward, uh, on this, uh, budget tonight. And I would also suggest that if we do, we're setting, uh, a precedent for every budget that comes before us. I, I think we need to demand information. That information, I understand we're in the middle of a public health crisis, but this is a new council with nine new members and a new administration. We should set the tone for the information that is provided to us because at the end of the day, we're representing constituents who will hold us accountable. And I think it's due diligence that we should have more information before we go forward on this budget. And based on that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to hold this in committee.
We have a motion to hold in committee by Counselor McMaster. We have a second. Second by Counselor, uh, Tramatosi. On discussion? None? Madam Clerk?
I'd see, I'd see, uh, Counselor Garrett pacing up.
Counselor Garrett, my apologies.
Is, um, Mr. Prendergast, is this information that you could get to us for, uh, for Thursday's, uh, the Thursday's meeting?
So is the, um, is the question whether or not I can produce a line-by-line budget for community outreach for FY twenty-one post-COVID? Plus clarification on what the sick leave incentive program is? I can do sick leave incentive program. That's, I can accomplish that. I don't know if I can participate, contemplate, and maybe, maybe the mayor could do it. Maybe the mayor could do it, but I don't know if I could, I could imagine how many block parties or events or, or publications that the office was, was going to have to put out uh, under the variety of circumstances that COVID, um, would present us. But I could certainly go back to my boss and see if he had any ideas.
You know, I was, I was concerned about the thirty-seven percent increase. It did, uh, shed, shed quite a bit of light on that. I think I'm just following up on, uh, Counselor McMaster's just question regarding, regarding the sick leave. You know, we don't want to hold up the, I don't want to hold up the budget process, but if it's going to be something that's going to be coming up Wednesday again and, and Thursday, if, if we could get that, if we could hold it in committee, um, if this is something you can get us on Thursday, you know, I'd be, be fine with holding it in, in committee. If you think you can get us the information, I don't want to, I don't want to hold the, I don't want to hold the budget process up for this, for this, uh, for this department. But I think, um, I think the question's out there, and I think, um, I think that we should have the information.
I'm, I'm happy to do my best to get you information on the, uh, sick leave incentive. But like I said, um, I, I find it exceedingly doubtful, um, how anyone would even contemplate how to build a community outreach budget. We don't know what kind of outreach is, uh, viable health-wise or on what kind of calendar. We just know that it has to happen, and, uh, certainly the administration would be eager to work with each of you, get your ideas, um, to see how we could move forward. Uh, but that would be exceedingly difficult if we don't have funding available to do it in the first place. So yes, on, um, on the incentive information, um, and I'm not, I would need greater clarification what the project was on, um, projecting how a community is supposed to bounce back from COVID nineteen through the community outreach.
Excellent.
Thank you, Counselor.
On discussion on this particular motion, Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as a suggestion, Mr. Prendergast, uh, as opposed to looking at individual budgeted events, could you perhaps categorize, um, and take an initial cut? And we all know that every forecast, uh, the first thing we know about forecasts is that they're wrong, but they're an estimate. Uh, and if we could have an estimate that categorized where you think that the, the money may be spent as we understand today, I think that would be extremely helpful and useful to the community. The council, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on discussion for this particular motion? Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, the current motion from Counselor McMaster, is that just for these four proposed agenda items tonight?
Um, the one line item, one twenty-one.
One twenty-one, not six ninety-two at all?
Just for clarity through the chair, motion is actually, uh, on the, the budget itself because my questions are two, it's the sick leave incentive and it's the community outreach. So I don't have a problem with the salaries if the, if my, if the, the, the will of the committee is for me to withdraw the motion as made and specifically make them to those two, uh, line items. I'm, I'm happy to do so, or if that can just be incorporated into the, the, the motion made, which I don't think I was, uh, specific on, I'd be fine with that. Um, take direction from the chair on what, what he prefers.
I, I too have concerns about this sick leave incentive. Uh, I also read it as Counselor McMaster does, uh, that it is an incentive. It's not a buyback. Um, you know, and if we have, you know, twenty, thirty, or forty city employees that haven't used any sick time over the last eight weeks due to a stay-at-home, you know, a work order from staying at home to work, um, they are accruing sick time. A lot of people might be eligible for this in, in this coming year. So I, I, I too would like to see, um, what this incentive looks like and, and find out who used this before, if it was in last year's budget as well. And how many people qualified for it and used it last year?
We have a motion we're going to hold one twenty-one. Madam Clerk?
I believe Counselor McMaster clarified, his motion was to hold in committee the budget, but he was willing to, based on the will of the committee, withdraw that if a second withdraw, on if I'm correctly paraphrasing, and then just specifically do line items. Is that correct, Counselor McMaster?
I would be fine with that and be interested on discussion through the chair if that's the will of, of the committee. I prefer not to hold up salaries if we don't have to, but if we can, if the will of the committee is just to do it all on, you know, Wednesday or Thursday evening, if this information can be, uh, provided, um, we can hold the whole thing up.
We're meeting Wednesday and Thursday regardless. Counselor Tramatosi?
Yeah, just a point of order. Maybe what we can do is just hold the entire bu, uh, one twenty-one until Thursday to start, uh, splitting out, uh, you know, splitting hairs on line items becomes convoluted. So we, we, we're not, I mean, the budget doesn't have to get approved until the end of June, so we have time. So there's no reason, we're not going to hold up somebody's salary. They're on last year's budget anyway. So, um, I would suggest that the motion go forward as it is, and then we can get clarification. This can be returned to committee on Thursday while we pull it from, um, when, when we talk about it because it's always, it's going to be in committee. It's going to stay in the committee. We can always pull it forward. So I think that would be the appropriate thing to do.
Okay, so your motion stays, Counselor McMaster?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to reiterate for the, for the folks at home, we're gonna, motion, there's a motion made by Counselor McMaster to hold. There's one twenty-one, uh, budget seconded by Counselor Tramatosi. Madam Clerk, if you could please call.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Does Counselor Garrett have a question?
Counselor Garrett?
So on a point of clarification, we are holding Department one twenty-one mayor, and we're moving forward with the other, other three departments.
Oh, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Tramatosi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
President Gregoritis?
Yes.
Uh, Chairman Sinella?
Yes.
Eleven yes to that.
And, um, do we have a motion? Get Mr. Stankovich moved up?
Yes, I'd like to make, yes, I'd like to make a motion to move the Human Rights Commission up.
So we're gonna move, give a motion made by Counselor Migliorelli to move, uh, Budget five forty-four, human rights. We have a seconded by Counselor Echols. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Tramatosi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor McNott?
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yep.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
President Gregoritis?
Yes.
Chairman Sinella?
Yes.
Eleven yes, I will make the.
And, and Madam Clerk, we have, um, our council meeting needs to start by?
Eight fifteen. Let me bring Mr. Stankovich in right now. There we go. Mike, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay.
You have a voice, Mr. Stankovich.
Great, please call me Mike. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, um, my name is Mike Stankovich, and I am the current Chair of the Melrose Human Rights Commission. I want to thank everyone for having me this evening, and thank you for moving me up. I appreciate it. Um, just a brief history, um, the, the Melrose Human Rights Commission is one of the oldest community human rights commissions in the Commonwealth. Uh, the commission was created in nineteen ninety-two upon recognizing a clear and apparent need in our community. For over twenty-seven years, our commission has worked to strengthen the local bonds in our city, fostering and cultivating a mutual respect and understanding of all viewpoints while verifying for all observers the enriching nature a diverse population brings with it. Some of the best and enduring work we do is with and in support of other human rights commissions and other community groups. Our essential mission is twofold, working to safeguard and advocate for our legal and social rights and helping our community to progress and transform individually and in our collective relations. Our work includes investigating claims of unlawful discrimination and harassment and either mediating where appropriate or referring claims to appropriate enforcement authorities, building and sustaining community relationships and partnerships, and working to promote goodwill, understanding of diverse cultures, and awareness of human rights issues. As some examples of our work in the last year, we have worked with the Melrose Police Department and the Melrose Public Schools to address graffiti in public buildings while beginning an outreach to all the PTO organizations to foster a relationship with our youngest residents. We have started the Kindness Club in two elementary schools to showcase acts of kindness and the momentum they build. With respect to promoting understanding of our many diverse cultures, cultures, building on the interest and in support of the community iftar, we held Diwali, a Hindu celebration of light, and Pride, a celebration of our LGBT community. We received a grant from the Foundation Trust for a speaker series, which unfortunately has been temporarily put on hold until the in-person events can begin again. But we are planning a robust speaker series beginning in the spring of twenty twenty-one. We have created a subcommittee on fundraising and marketing so that we can expand our outreach and programming without having to ask the city for additional resources. We have created a recruitment subcommittee so that we can address the needs in our commission and be in a position to recommend to our mayor the candidate that's best suited to meet our needs. We have collaborated with businesses throughout Melrose who consistently and constantly step up to donate to our causes by giving them the recognition they deserve at our events, which will hopefully yield more business for them while also allowing our programming to expand without the need to request additional funding. We have much more work to do. And like all of us, while the current pandemic initially stunted our progress, we are innovating and transforming our programming to meet these times. Human rights do not stop in pandemics, and neither will the purpose of our commission. We must be resilient. Our commissioners infused with the new energy of what I hope is soon to be newly confirmed commissioners chose not to sit idly by and wait for this pandemic to pass before we started our community events. This year's Pride celebration will look different than the previous two, but we remain committed to our mission. On Sunday, June twenty-first, we'll be portraying an art project in the kiosk at City Hall and encouraging residents to paint themselves prideful. We are in the process of creating and building upon the virtual pop-up libraries around the city as well as streaming a read aloud. On Tuesday, June twenty-third, we will be streaming several musical performances. On June twenty-fourth, we are in talks for a drag queen story hour. On June twenty-fifth, we are in the process of having virtual poem readings. On June twenty-sixth, we are attempting to partner with M M T V for a Prideful Movie Event, bringing popcorn to the Melrose Public Schools so that those receiving meals can have an at-home movie night. And on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, we are organizing a Pride Car Parade through Melrose. These events will bring our community together while also promoting our core mission. Events will bring our community together while also promoting our core mission. There is more that can be done. Interest and demand from the community and what this commission can and should be doing is increasing. Our expanded programming has in part been a response to that demand. Our expenditures have increased exceeding our $3,000 appropriation. Those expenses were covered by in-kind and small dollar dollar donations, usually amounting to at least half as much as our allocated budget. We anticipate this trend continuing. We will continue to innovate during this pandemic to make sure our residents know that we remain committed to our cause and available to address their needs. Obviously, our ability to fundraise during these difficult times, but the need for our commission has not shrunk, which is why I am asking this council to commit to keeping our funding the same it has been, $3,000. And with it, a promise that we will be good stewards of the funds we are allocated. We will continue to seek to expand our programming and outreach while simultaneously coming up with new ways to fund our commission. Our work is made possible through the dedication of our 11 volunteer public servants and many volunteers and partners in our community. I would be remiss in not thanking them for their commitment, sacrifices, and dedication. Thank you for your continued support, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. We have Counselor Tramatosi up first. Just want to be mindful of the time because we will have to bounce into City Council.
Thank you. I'll be I'll be real brief. Michael, I want to thank you for your service and and thank all the for the service of all the members on the your commission. I think you you put together wonderful program. Your fantastic operation, and I commend you and and the other commissioners. This is a balanced budget. There's no increase from prior years, and I support it wholeheartedly. And with that, I'll I'll see if anybody else wants to comment. Thank you again, Michael. Appreciate it.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Good evening, Michael, and thank you so much for joining us. I just want to support this budget and want to thank you all for all the services you provide to our community and when I say, I think all the counselors that served on this Human Rights Commission missed being part of your team.
Thank you.
President Gregoritis?
Are you looking for a motion to recess? Um, it's yeah, it's 8:13. I I think I'm making a motion to recess so that we can enter into the full council.
We also don't have any other questions that are in queue, and I don't know if somebody wants to just motion.
Sorry, I can't see everyone's camera.
I like to motion, I can motion for passage.
Yes. Second.
Motion for passage by Governor Vice Chair Migliorelli, seconded by Counselor McNott. Madam Clerk, could you quickly call the roll? President Gregoritis?
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Tramatosi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
President Gregoritis?
Yes.
Chairman Sinella?
Yes.
Eleven yes to move the bottom line.
Like to move to recess.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I'll let you out.
Motion to recess by Counselor McNott, seconded by Counselor Garapay.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Tramatosi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor McNott?
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
President Gregoritis?
Yes.
Chairman Sinella?
Yes.
You're recessed.
Now at recess. President Griggs, tell you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Sinella. It is 8:14. On Monday, May 18th, and the meeting of the Melrose City Council is now called to order. I am President Gregoritis, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Melrose website and on mmtv3.org. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella?
Yeah.
Counselor Echols? Counselor Garapay?
Here.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Here.
Counselor McMaster?
Here.
Counselor McNott?
Here.
Counselor Migliorelli?
Here.
Counselor Stewart?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Tramatosi?
Here.
President Gregoritis?
Here.
Eleven present.
Okay, eleven present. We have a quorum. The meeting may will proceed. Do we have a motion for public to enter into public comment?
Motion to open public comment.
We have a motion to open public comment by Counselor Stewart, seconded by Counselor Sinella. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella?
Yes.
Echols?
Yes.
Garapay?
Yes.
Jamaladeen?
Yes.
McMaster?
Yes.
McNott?
Yes.
Migliorelli?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Tramatosi?
Yes.
Gregoritis?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, the motion carries. At this time, we are in public comment, during which any member of the public may virtually come forward to speak on any item on the agenda. If you are participating via webex and wish to speak, please digitally raise your hand, and if you're on an iPhone, you need to swipe in order to be able to do so. I don't remember which direction you swipe. Do we have anyone waiting to participate in public comment?
I do not see anyone, Madam President.
Motion to close public comment.
Okay, we have a motion to post public comment by Counselor Garapay, seconded by Counselor Stewart. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella?
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor McNott?
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Tramatosi?
Yes.
President Gregoritis?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Eleven yes. The motion carries. Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk of Committees, can you please read the communications from His Honor, the Mayor, and other city officials?
Order 2020-96, an appropriation from free cash account 01-324001 in the amount of $2,500,000 to various stabilization funds.
This order will be referred to the Appropriations Committee.
Order 2020-97, a Melrose Police Vehicle Donation. Melrose Police requests the City of Melrose accept a vehicle donation from Metropolitan Insurance Company to be used by the Melrose I'm sorry, yeah, Melrose Police Middle School SRO to raise awareness for autism.
This order will be referred will be referred to the Appropriations Committee.
Order 2020-98, Acceptance of the FY20 Firefighter Turnout Gear Grant in the Amount of $2,500.
This order will be referred to the Appropriations Committee.
Order 2020-99, Appointment of Bonnie Clapp, 177 First Street to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of Maya Jamaladeen. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2021.
This order will be referred to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee.
Order 2020-100, Appointment of Elizabeth Chichioni, 14 Irving Street to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of Lila Migliorelli. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2021.
This order will be referred to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. Madam Clerk of Committees, can you please read the new business?
Order 2020-101, A Resolution in Recognition of the Melrose Fire Department.
Madam President?
Yes, Counsel McMaster.
At this time, I am seeking immediate consideration.
Okay, we have a request for immediate consideration by Counsel McMaster for Order 2020-101. Do we have any objections? Okay, seeing no objections, this order is now before us. Do I have entertain a motion to suspend the rules? I believe we have some members that we wish to bring forward. Is that correct, Counsel McMaster?
Yes, I believe we have with us Chief Kalina, as well as President Starr of the the Fire Union, and I'm not sure if Mayor Burke is able to join us or if Mr. Prendergast will be represented.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules by Counselor Stewart, seconded by Counselor Tramatosi. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella?
Yes.
Counselor Echols? Counselor Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor McNott?
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Tramatosi?
Yes.
President Gregoritis?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Hey, we are under a suspension of the rules, Counselors McMaster and Stewart. I will turn this over to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Do we have video of our guests or they can they hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Chief. Mr. Starr with us? There he is. Good evening. Thank you both for joining us this evening. As background, this is a resolution filed by Counselor Stewart and I. The resolution was filed on May 4th, which as some of you probably know, and I know Chief Kalina and President Starr know, is International Firefighters Day. We very much appreciate, of course, all that our firefighters do throughout the course of the year, but we certainly recognize how difficult and challenging these last few months have been with the COVID-19 pandemic and what it has called upon you, Chief, and your team to do in terms of preparedness and in response. So we very much appreciate that, and it's also not lost on me that we are hearing this resolution this evening just two days after a significant fire in Los Angeles where 12 firefighters were injured, eight of whom remained in the hospital. Also, just yesterday in Manhattan, some of you may have heard that there was a major fire, excuse me, in Harlem at a furniture store where one firefighter was injured. I later on, I think Counselor Stewart's going to talk a little bit more about these types of personal heroics that are not always seen, so I will I will leave that to Counselor Stewart to talk about. And you know, what I would just say, and some of you may have seen the video of the conflagration in Los Angeles where firefighters were exiting a building, trying to get down from the ladder. And you'll see on that there are three firefighters who get down, and they're on the top of the the apparatus heading away from the fire. Next thing you know, there is a massive explosion. And what did the three firefighters do? They didn't jump off of the apparatus. They didn't continue running in the opposite direction. They literally turned around and ran towards the explosion because their brothers were on the ladder. So I do think as sad and tragic as that is, and and we certainly extend our thoughts and prayers and well wishes to them, their brothers and sisters, and certainly their their family and their their community in Los Angeles. It is still, I think, fitting that we are honoring our men and women of the Fire Department today. So I will proceed to read the resolution. City of Melrose in City Council, a resolution in recognition of the Melrose Fire Department. Whereas firefighters are formally recognized and celebrated during the month of May, and whereas International Firefighters Day is observed annually on May 4th, and whereas the field of firefighting has evolved over the years to include medical aid, hazardous waste cleanup, and biohazard emergencies, as well as participation in search and rescue operations and preparedness activities to prevent domestic and foreign terrorism. And whereas the Melrose Fire Department has continually operated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for 151 years. And whereas the Melrose Fire Department is comprised of 57 firefighters, who staff three fire stations strategically located throughout the city. And whereas the Melrose Fire Department is broken down into four suppression groups, made up of two engine companies, one ladder company, one rescue company. And whereas in 2019, the Melrose Fire Department responded to 4,495 service calls, including 279 fires, 2,480 medical aides, 272 motor vehicle crashes, and dozens of drug overdoses. And whereas in the first four months of 2020, the Melrose Fire Department has responded to 1,320 service calls, including 73 fires, 740 medical aides, 56 motor vehicle crashes, and 23 drug overdoses. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has placed additional demands on the Melrose Fire Department and exposed its members to a novel virus at great personal risk. And whereas each and every day our firefighters risk their personal safety for the health and welfare of the general public. And whereas the Melrose Fire Department represents the very best of the firefighting profession. Be it resolved, we, the members of the Melrose City Council, do hereby express our sincere appreciation to the men and women of the Melrose Fire Department for their hard work, selflessness, bravery, and sacrifice on behalf of the City of Melrose. And in recognition thereof, be it further resolved that on this 18th day of May in the year 2020, a copy of this resolution be spread upon the records of the Melrose City Council, offered by Sean M. McMaster, City Council Award V, and Rob Stewart, City Council Award III, attested by members of the Melrose City Council. Madam President, at this time, I would ask that Counselor Stewart be recognized as my co-sponsor to say a few words.
Certainly, Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Madam President. And through the chair, thank you, Counsel McMaster for those fine words. I'll be brief, but I just want to let let you know that I was very proud to co-sponsor this resolution with Counsel McMaster. I echo Mr. McMaster's sentiments, and I think the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the effort and the amount of work that you do that is largely unrecognized or unknown, but absolutely critical and essential to the community. Throughout the year, particularly during these trying times, as part of the frontline team to battle COVID-19, the men and women of your department make personal sacrifices to to go out and respond to all of the community needs, whether it be a fire or the related issues that you deal with on a day-to-day basis. I think the recent example of the Willow Street Fire and how this was quickly and efficiently contained without any loss of life, without in avoiding any spread of the fire to additional buildings in a tightly built area within the community is a real testament to the value that you bring when the time of crisis arise. So I want to thank you personally as a a a member of the community and also as a representative of this community for your continued commitment into the well-being of the city Melrose. So thank you, Fire Chief Kalina, and thank you, Mr. Starr. We very we very much appreciate your efforts. Madam President?
Thank you, Counsel McMaster and Counselor Stewart. Chief Kalina, President Starr, is there anything that you'd like to say to the council? You don't have to, but you're welcome to speak. Chief Kalina?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you to the councils who filed the order and the resolution and to all of you counselors that are supporters not only for this order, but the throughout the years. It means a lot to my members that we have the support of the council and in the city as a whole. The firefighters, they do so much day in and day out. And they receive very little recognition and for their duties regardless. We're all very proud to serve the city, and we don't do but we just, we truly love our job, and we're happy to serve the citizens of Melrose and appreciate your recognition of my firefighters. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. President Starr? You're on mute.
Can you hear me now? All right, so I basically just wanted to reiterate what the chief had just said. Very proud to represent the members of Local 1617 and
Very proud to represent the members of Local 16, 17, and, you know, it's it's been great to serve with them and serving the citizens of Melrose. We've gained a lot of support from the citizens, as well as city council, from anything, from, you know, just wishing us well. And I know even some of the city councilors, Kristinella dropped off hand sanitizer and masks. And we definitely feel the support from you, and we'll always be here to look after the city of Melrose. So we look forward to continuing to get your support, and thanks so much for this recognition, this resolution.
Thank you, and thank you both and your members for all that you do on behalf of the City of Melrose every day. And thank you to Counselors McMaster and Stewart for bringing forward this resolution. At this time, do we have any other counselors wishing to speak? Okay, at this time, we can continue on with our new business.
Motion to place on file?
Sorry, yes. Motion to place on file by Counselor Tramantozzi. Seconded by Counselor McMaster. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam President, it sounded like the mayor might be wanting to come in. I don't know if it was in reference to this.
Okay.
I saw my
There he is.
I saw my text scroll down because I'm getting a Lou Gehrig effect here. But I did want to jump in. Are you guys getting that echo? I'll try to be brief because I don't know what's going on. But I too want to thank the men and women of the Melrose Fire Department, in particular because they have served my family well, in particular with my mom and dad being frail. They've been several times over the course of the last several years, where they have had to transport my parents. And we have a bit of a history on my father's side of folks being on the job, not retired, passed away. But I know from them what that means, and I certainly, you know, on behalf of my family, want to thank you for the terrific work you did in making sure my mom and dad were safe and got what they needed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I believe we had a motion before us to place this resolution on file, and we were going to call the roll.
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes. The resolution has been placed on file. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, committees, can we continue with our new business? You're on mute, Kristen.
Order $10, Order 2020-102, A Resolution in Recognition of the Melrose Police Department.
Okay, and this order will be sent to the Appropriations Committee, where I believe, where the chief will already be joining us Thursday evening. Do we have any orders out of order?
We do not.
Do we have any orders from committee?
We do not.
Do we have any reports from counselors under Rule 53? Okay, seeing none, can we move to the calendar?
Order 2020-86, Reappointment of Michael Stankovich, 9 Harding Street, to the Human Rights Commission for a second full term, who expired on the last day of February 2023.
Okay, and this comes from Health, Education, and Welfare with a recommendation for passage. Counselor Echols.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for passage of Order 2020-86 from Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes. So the motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Stankovich on his reappointment. Madam Clerk of Committees.
Order 2020-85, A Resolution Honoring the Melrose Chapter of the '84 Movement Fighting Youth Tobacco Use in Massachusetts.
Okay, and this order comes to us from Health, Education, and Welfare with a recommendation to place on file.
Move to place this order down. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to place the order on file by Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor McNott. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, so the order has been placed on file. Madam Clerk of Committees.
Order 2020-79, Establishment of OSHA Reserve Stabilization Fund.
Okay, and this order comes to us from the Appropriations Committee with a recommendation for passage.
Madam Clerk, I make a motion to recommend passage.
Second.
So we have a motion for passage by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor McNott. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes. So the order has passed. Madam Clerk of Committees.
Order 2020-76, Authorizing a Loan in the Amount of $100,000 for Costs of Conducting a Planning Study and Final Design for Repair or Replace of the Department of Public Works Salt Shed.
Okay, and this order comes to us from the Appropriations Committee with a recommendation as amended by substitution.
Motion to recommend passage.
Second.
We have a motion to recommend passage by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Garapay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Eleven yes. So this passes as with the recommended substitutions. Madam Clerk of Committees.
Order 2020-69, Authorizing a Bond in the Amount of $2,311,205 for Building Repairs to Memorial Hall.
Okay, and this order comes to us from the Appropriations Committee with a recommendation for passage.
Motion to recommend passage.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion for passage by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Eleven yes. So the order has passed. Okay, we have one more. Madam Clerk of Committees.
Order 2020-103, A Divided Order, an Appropriation in the Amount of $579,000 from Free Cash Account 01-324001 to various capital accounts as set forth herein.
And this comes from the Appropriations Committee with a recommendation for passage.
Motion for passage.
Second.
We have a motion for passage by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen. I think Counselor Jamaladeen froze. I'll come back. Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen, can you hear us?
She's got a low tone with error message.
Oh, there she is.
There she is. Can you hear us, Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, for the vote. Perfect timing. Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes. The order passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk of Committees. Seeing nothing else. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Thomas. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols. Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned, and we will be returning to appropriations. Thank you all.
Thank you. Well, welcome back to Part Two of appropriations. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
We have a quick time check and recording.
Sure. So as soon as the city clerk gives me back the host privileges, I'll be able to tell you the time. But I do see the event recording is in progress.
Can we pick up where we left off? Do we have to vote this back into session?
Say that again. You asked me a question, sorry.
Take a vote to convene. Okay. So we left off with line item Budget 692, Community Events.
Patrick's still in the room. Patrick, can you hear?
Patrick's in the room.
Yes, I can.
Like to speak to Community Events 692.
As long as we're fully before the committee and the rules are suspended, I am happy to be here. This event, this particular item is similar to the previous one in that traditionally, it has always gone to, I believe in its entirety, to funding the Memorial Day Parade. There will be no Memorial Day Parade this year. There is a series of events that, I believe, our office has publicized today. We are soliciting veterans in Melrose and people who know and love them to submit pictures of vets and some background information about them so that we can kind of create a slideshow for the community. The mayor will be visiting along with some members of veterans organizations. Are many memorials in Melrose on Veterans, excuse me, on Memorial Day. And so, you know, despite COVID-19 forcing us to really change how we celebrate and remember mostly and mark, we will assist and we will endure it and find appropriate ways to give our thanks. That having said, we are asking for this funding because when it is safe to gather again, we would like to properly acknowledge and mark what impacts COVID-19 has had on our families who've served in the armed forces. And this account gives us that flexibility to be able to perhaps start a new tradition or a temporary one so that the community can come together and really show their thanks. I have to imagine that while I want to keep, and I imagine the mayor would like to keep Memorial Day to be a somber and sacred day for those who have passed their service or are doing their service. There are so many people that have helped us through this time. Many to name at this point. And marking them and their sacrifice and the spirit of all those that we attribute to on Memorial Day is going to be vital for us. So I haven't priced out bands or materials or on what day this event will happen. I am faithful that the day will come, and we will need the money to pay for it. And so I ask your deliberations that you
I didn't see anybody. His hands go up. If you could raise your hand, I'm not sure anybody has any questions on this particular. See anybody? What is the will of the committee?
To recommend.
I wish to recommend by, go ahead.
Uh, I hope you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just more of a point of clarification. For the 2020, there was originally budgeted the $8,000, of which zero was spent. Just clarify, what happens to that money? It hasn't gotten reallocated to anything, right? So what does that money go?
Allocated money at the end of a fiscal year becomes eligible for consideration by the state as part of our certified free cash amount. My understanding, if I find out that I'm wrong, I'll let you know.
But it goes to free cash, basically, into the coffers.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prenngrass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We had a motion to recommend passage by Counselor Echols. Did I hear a second? Seconded by Counselor Thomas. Discussion. Anybody have anything they want to comment on? Counselor Thomas, do you want to unmute?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Prenngrass, thank you for being here again. I'd like to see this money. Like you said, it's typically used for a Memorial Day Parade. However this is used later on this year, whether it be for community outreach events, if we could still, you know, make a point to recognize our veterans that paid the ultimate sacrifice on Memorial Day in some way or shape or form, moving forward with this money, however it's spent, you know, a nod can be given to the Veterans Day and Memorial Day somewhere later on this year.
That's fully our intention. Much agreed, Counselor.
Great, thank you so much.
Anybody else on discussion for this particular motion, passage? Madam Clerk, you call the roll?
Counselor Migliorelli.
Sorry. Yes.
Counselor Tramantozzi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chairman Sinella.
Yes.
Eleven yes, move the bottom line.
Next up is 545, the Disability Commission. Patrick, if you'd like to speak to that.
Thank you, Council, for moving forward on the community events line. The Disability Commission, the Disability Commission making sure that the Melrose community is serving and leading on advocating for and creating an environment in which people of all abilities feel safe and welcome and can move around with ease has been a priority for my boss while he was state representative. Voting himself pieces of key legislation and successive budgets that gone to help folks with disabilities. And upon becoming mayor, one of his first acts was to make sure that we finalize the steps that this city needs to take in order to conform with the options available to it. the options available to it by the Commonwealth to have a full disability commission. The council did approve that. We are reviewing, and the mayor is reviewing applications to serve on that commission. As is traditional with the majority of our commissions, this appropriation is a really small stipend to allow that commission. It's not a stipend in that, misspoken, it is a, an appropriation that the commission could use for outreach or events or in a form they saw fit, which conforms with state law, local ordinances. If anything has been revealed, it is that in a crisis, being able to communicate with effectively all the various communities within Melrose is pivotal. And it's not nearly as easy as I think, I certainly thought getting into it. And I would have to imagine many people at home watching may think it is simple things like making sure that we are using a platform that facilitates the production of closed captioning, that we are publishing transcripts, that we are always thinking about even how we write our messaging, that it's in clear, concise, in a clear and concise format that can be translated easily. Being, offering levels of accessibility, thinking about all the different communities and populations and individuals and families that live in Melrose is key. It's an area where we certainly have room for improvement. I think we've made great strides and we've worked on it quite a bit during this crisis. Especially through this crisis, because if we're not getting through this all together, then I don't think we're really getting through it. Neither is the mayor. So that being said, we're really excited to see the work that the commission will complete and work on and do. We're excited to appoint people to it. And we certainly would not like to appoint them to a commission that unlike many other commissions would somehow not have funding. And so we wanted to make sure that even as, as tight as things are, the 2,000, the couple thousand bucks that we're asking for will be key in, just like you heard from the Human Rights Commission. Conducting surveys, you know, holding events, conducting outreach, things like that. It's really going to be up to the commission as to how they choose to move forward with it. For that, we have to offer.
Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to the chair, Mr. Prendergast, I appreciate you coming forward with this. I'm proud to have supported the mayor's initiative to create this commission and I look forward to supporting this going forward. If you have any support on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel.
President Craig, did you have a?
Thank you, Chairman Small. Thank, thank you, Mr. Prendergast. Yes, I'm very supportive of this commission. I'm really excited that Melrose has finally taken the big step in getting this up and running. I did want to ask, to your point about the lack of commissioners that currently are on a commission, if there's a plan to get that, I understand you have understandably been focused on other things, but if we're going to give a budget to a commission, I'd like to know that it's going to be populated with commissioners pretty quickly so that they can spend that budget. What's the timeline for those appointments?
The, as soon as the mayor is ready to make them, which I imagine will be in the next several weeks.
Okay, but you anticipate.
Certainly, certainly within the fiscal year.
Within this current fiscal year.
I have to imagine so, yeah.
Thank you. No further questions.
Counselor Echols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question and it's kind of broad on all of the commissions. There's a few items, the Women's Commission, Human Rights, Disabilities. So when those commissions are able to fundraise, is that, are those funds kept, kept outside of the city and unrestricted? Perhaps there's some other counselors on this council that could also answer these questions. But, but I believe, so, so kind of where does the money go when they fundraise? Is it unrestricted, unlike this money, which I imagine is restricted in the same way that most city funds are? You could just shed a little light on that if you know.
I don't know.
Okay. I'm sure, I'm sure there's a way to find out if, if we need to, but thank you.
Anybody else have something? Counselor McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate President Gregoritis's question about the status of the, the commission. And Mr. Prendergast, I know it, it, it seems like the, the mayor is going to make a good faith effort to send appointments to us for approval this fiscal year, fiscal year 2020. Do you know if anyone's been identified yet, though? Where are we in the process of either seeking applicants or the mayor proactively identifying candidates to come before us?
The mayor put out a general call to the community prior to COVID. Seeking anybody and everyone to fulfill a campaign promise that wanted to serve any border commission to apply for said boards and commissions. We received an overwhelming number of applications, including from those who, you know, when we took office, we did find that there were a number of people serving on boards and commissions who were continuing to serve despite their term, having been expired or fulfilled. And so we have dozens of applications. The mayor has spoken with many of them, has reviewed many of them. I have to imagine that a few he has not yet had the opportunity to review. And so we've really kind of just been moving methodically board and commission by board and commission to identify the right mix of diverse viewpoints that we need to make sure that we have a good report and debate, you know, on, on those commissions. So we get the best product for, for the residents of Melrose possible. And so we do have candidates identified. I believe the mayor has been able to speak with several of them. I think we do have a couple people that may be very close to being ready to be nominated. And there's certainly others that further vetting and reviewing has to occur for. So that's, that's, that's my understanding where we're at.
Thank you for that answer. Having served on the Human Rights Commission for six years, a body that I chaired, and I think Counselor Jamaladeen and Counselor Migliorelli can attest that, you know, the commissions, like the Human Rights Commission, I think in the case of Women's Commission and here with the New Disabilities Commission is they're able to make a little money go a long way. So I do think this is certainly justified amount. I'd love to see more money provided to commissions, but commissions have managed to make it work with little money. The, the question that I have is about the disparity among the three commissions, the Human Rights Commission, which of course is well established. It's been around since, I believe, the early 1980s, has a $3,000 budget. Certainly, there's more annual events that, you know, the, the commission knows how it's going to spend that money every year, and it, it does so very well. The Women's Commission's budget is only $2,000. So I'm wondering why for this particular budget, the Women's Commission, I believe, has been around for seven years. Why is the Disability Commission budget, which is the first time it's coming before us, you know, as you said, nobody's been appointed yet. Why is that $500 more than the Women's Commission?
Think that it's vital to note that the amounts put down on these various commissions are in no way indicative of any prioritization of these commissions. Instead, typically speaks to the past practice of these commissions and this council's funding of them. Succinctly, there is no reason when any particular commission gets more or less. I think it historically has had to do with the activities of that commission. And again, this is one of those places where if a particular commission has a great idea that they're looking for financial support for, the mayor's community outreach budget is flexible enough to be able to support these commissions and their work. And so certainly the council in its wisdom can raise the amount the administration is requesting for any particular item. And so if you feel like that ought to happen here, or rather when we, we take up the Women's Commission, then, you know, certainly that is for you.
Yeah, we, we don't have the authority to, to raise, and I'm not suggesting that, that, that we do. The question is just whether or not looking at $2,500, I think maybe that $500 might be worthwhile in terms of it being $500 of seed money that a new commission might need, that an established commission wouldn't necessarily need. So the reason I, I pose that question is just if there is questions or concerns from the public about why a new commission would have a higher budget than another social justice commission that's been around for, again, I believe, seven years. I think it being $500 higher, at least this first year, gives some room to do some of the startup work that might be needed as this group gels. Thank you.
And forgive me, Counsel, because I did speak in error. You, I, I, you have the power to diminish particular items, not raise them. And so if you'd like to cut the Disability Commission by $500 to make it comport with the Women's Commission or recommend that the administration goes back and raises the Women's Commission, we certainly could do that. But, but forgive me for confusing terms momentarily. Thank you.
I think for, for this first year, $500 increase in seed money and then assessing the, the spending practices over the first year would be, you know, in order to look at what that appropriate budget might be for next year. But I, I do think it's justified for this first year to, to be where it's at. Thank you.
Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Prendergast, thank you. Counselor McMaster touched on what I was going to talk about as well, the $2,500, whether or not that was a good faith estimate of what they needed for the year. So I appreciate you talking on this. I'm very much in favor of the Disability Commission and I'm looking forward to dealing with them moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Tremontosi.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the chair, I would like the opportunity to maybe take a stab at Counselor Echols' question. And I might have a re-answer to your question. But before I get to that, I, I do want to thank Mr. Prendergast for the clarification on the budget. You're right. Just, just so everybody understands, we cannot add to any particular budget. Nor can we take from one budget, one, one department's budget and add it to another department's budget. That's not within our powers. We can certainly reduce a, a department budget, but that's as far as we go. So in regards to Counselor Echols', Echols' question, I believe donations, I, I believe, yeah, the commission would have to request that we establish a revolving fund for that particular commission to accept donations. And that revolving fund would be approved by the council. They would come before us with the request to establish a revolving fund. Hope that helps. Thank you.
Vice Chair Megs. Or unmute.
Through the chair, I just want to clarify, actually, for the commissions, there's a set of donation accounts. Just to answer Counselor Echols' question, just to clarify for Counselor Tremontosi, that, so the Human Rights Commission has donation accounts, a few of the other commissions have donation accounts that you can raise money through those accounts for the purposes of serving the people in the city of Melrose through that commission. So that's how that works.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I, I, I am standing corrected as well, but, but thank you. I thought it was, I, I know that there are some revolving funds that the, the Council on Aging has what I think in particular that is established to accept donations. Thank you.
Did I miss anybody? I did. What is the will of the committee on this line?
Motion to recommend that we move the bottom line.
Wait, did Counselor Jamaladeen?
I think Jamaladeen has her own.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of the Disability Commission, I would like to ask Mr. Prendergast a question. What are the ways and tools that the mayor's office is using to publicize this opportunity so that it can reach those who are special needs and with disability?
Well, during his campaign for mayor, the mayor sent literature to every registered voting household that was likely to vote, roughly around 10,000. Talking about his interest in the Disability Commission, we heard from a lot of people that way. He also has longstanding ties with the Disability Commission, both through advocacy at the State House as well as particular people who are members of the disability community that live in Melrose that he's developed longstanding relationships with and has certainly publicized these opportunities that way. Upon becoming mayor, he did put out, I believe, at least one, if not multiple, calls for service into the local papers, including the free weekly that went to each home in Melrose, or household, rather. Additionally, when this council passed the Disability Commission, additional press was generated. We then put out the call for please serve on any commission and received dozens, not over 100, applications for that. And I would say probably the most popular one was the Disability Commission. Don't quote me on that. I think that's the case. And he certainly has put those opportunities not only in the local print media, but also through the mayor's blog as well as on his own social media channels multiple times a couple months ago. Those are, those are there's relationships in the community through, on the campaign trail, through social media, through the mayor's blog, through print media, appearing before this council. And through word of mouth, the mayor has tried to make as many Melrosians aware of the existence of the commission and encourage them to fight for it as possible.
Any, thank you, any any ways that can support those with disability that cannot submit their application online or with letters? Did we make any of these services available for them? Such as filing the application over the phone? Or other ways?
That option's always been there. I believe we've always tried to put a phone number. If you have any questions, please email or call. And certainly I hope that if that was not sufficiently explicit for any candidates who wanted to serve on a public border commission to then pick up the phone, that they then be able to email or voice to text as they are able.
So their application will be accepted via phone?
Are you aware of anybody who applied via phone that was denied?
I'm, I'm just asking so that, you know, public members are able to understand that they can apply via phone.
They had that opportunity, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We had a motion made by Counselor McMaster to move the, move the bottom line. You have a second?
Second.
By President Gregoritis. Any further discussion on this? None. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Isn't it Gregoritis?
Yes.
Chairman Snella.
Yes.
Eleven yes, move the bottom line.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Counselors McNott, seconded by Vice Chair Migliorelli. Madam Clerk, for the last time this evening, could you call the roll?
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Counselor, Chairman Sinella.
Yes.
Eleven yes adjourned.
These are adjourned. Thank you.
So you are Wednesday, is it?
Wednesday it is. Good night.